I hope Star is still on the track, she's thirty-five.
I think sometimes they just get, get better.
That's not your thing.
Yesterday I just thought my equilibrium was almost. Maybe in the one side.
Chad, Dr. Wood? Maybe your crystal might be flipped. They can flip it and it actually could cause migraines, absolutely.
I don't feel like we do that, so.
What is this?
The ones that are four, bugs, birds, mosquitoes.
Said animal, I'm like, hm, like wily coyotes.
Yeah.
Like, what are we doing?
That's how we get rid of the, the mosquito sound.
Well, we're gonna start metal fabrication. Actually, there's actually an angle back there.
Is there? Stuff we.
Bill straightened out some.
I meant this.
He was on the housing authority. But he's been on three different committees and the housing authority, twenty-one years just, just yet.
I know, isn't that like?
That's awesome.
Yeah, so I thought, honorable thank you from all of us for being always speaking to you.
Have you filled a concrete thing?
Yep, I did. It's getting hot again.
Getting hot again.
Back to the eighties.
You still at school?
Yeah, we got it, it's so wet.
It's wet.
Dig down about four foot.
Well, yeah, that drainage has been broken forever.
Yeah, so. Turn it over, turn it over, turn it over.
Did that pipe even, was it disconnected underneath there?
There, no pipe under there.
Just to the ground.
It just went right in there, right down, so. Got a whole curvy under the, the fence is all. The entrance is all.
Oh, we know, yeah, the Henry Field entrance was laying way low.
You can have a hold of it.
Oh. We'll be done, we get the red. I'm over there.
Hopefully we can get something there straightened out.
The pods, the pods.
Right. Too big ass.
Yeah, I figured it was super wet in there, I just thought maybe the pipe would come disconnected from years of people, the buses and everything else driving on it. That's gotta be super thick because, you know, sometimes they, sometimes they drive the activity bus through there. You know, so it's gotta be thicker concrete.
Oh, yeah, it's eighteen inches in place, so. Right places, wrong places.
I was curious, that ain't right. I didn't want to bug you.
We dug up a tree. A tree under there.
Really? Little stump under there?
Yeah.
Try and sprout where it could.
That's what, here I go.
You can switch sand before you down.
No way, take my turn.
Make sure you're wet.
I didn't move him after the cemetery today, sorry. I usually try and move him after cemetery, or after. Meeting.
It's kind of like playing Russian charlie.
Do you need these?
I, I look at them earlier than you. I had all good intentions coming in today. I love it.
What are you doing? I thought you were tearing him up. Should've got the quick ghettoie splatter. How are you?
Good.
Good. You know, better warm up a little bit. Get tomorrow, just wait, tomorrow's the day, you know. Something you say? Yeah, that's what the ranger, they were thinking about that year. I was over, we poured that sidewalk and stuff over that time.
Is it Saturday or Friday?
Yeah. One oh five is what I got. It's alright, I'm gonna drag, drag it. Yeah, like, yeah, like, back between the school and the field there.
Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in a garden, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, call Jesse.
Burden.
Here.
Sims. Schmidt.
Yeah.
Peterson.
Here.
Bishop.
Here. Thank you very much. Uh, the city of Grant does record these meetings. The city of Grant abides by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act according to when we conduct your business, a copy of that is posted on the South Hall and also online as required by the Nebraska State law. There's a copy of the city county packet and the council chamber is located on the counter by the entrance near the coffee maker, this needs to stay there for public inspection and this is also because of the Nebraska Opens Meeting Act. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter to close session at any time during the meeting in accordance to Nebraska Open Meeting Act. Even though closed session may not be indicated on the agenda, is the intention of the mayor and the city council to take up items on the agenda in order that are presented. However, we reserve the right to take up matters in a different order to accommodate our schedules. The city of Grant further reserved the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record and the agenda item that you wish to talk upon. Do everyone have a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
I'm going to accept the July ninth, two thousand twenty-four proposed agenda second.
Andrea, move, Kimberly, second that we accept the July ninth, two thousand twenty-four proposed agenda, any discussion? Teri, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Motion carried. Review and action on prior meeting minutes from June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
And move to set action on prior meeting minutes for June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four and, uh, what are the readings?
Second. Teri, move, Kimberly, second that we accept the prior meeting minutes from June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four and we, uh, reading any discussion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Teri?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, let's see. Communications, Derser?
Alright, I will be briefed so that we can get into the seven oh five public hearing. Um, I'd like to officially announce that our new hire Zach Sides will start Monday, July fifteenth, uh, we're excited about that. Um, he's a Grant native. I'm not sure if I'm listening. Anyway, the parents. Move back to the area, so we're excited to have him join our team. Um, I was, as I was doing my research for a structural engineer, um, Brett Berkland, the TC Engineering is now certified to do structural engineering. So, that's great for us, we don't have to get someone clear out from Lincoln. Um, he will have to fit it into a schedule as to when he can come do an inspection, but, uh, but I reached out to him and put the ball in his court, so that's good news for us.
Thank you.
Familiar with that company, obviously, with Tom being our engineer for many, many years, so. Uh, the striping company will be here Thursday evening. Uh, to do the parking stalls downtown, the park, touch up all the striping areas, the crosswalks, so on and so forth. Um, July twelfth, the Army Band will be in town. So, we're excited about that. This Friday, Army Band will be at the, playing in the, in the pavilion at the park, in the band shell. Uh, Danielle Cunningham was able to get the dome painted, looks very nice. She also assisted us in doing some maintenance around there with some sweeping and stuff like that, so it's all clean surface right now. Hope it stays that way until Friday. Um, she picked up quite a few rocks, I sent some kids some rocks in there, but, uh. Um, that's good news for us there, um, and then we are going to host the Aeronautical Commission on August ninth. Uh, they, they travel, um, across the state, so the, the Nebraska Aeronautics Commission likes to pick different locations for their meetings and we were selected to host the Nebraska Aeronautical Meeting. Commission meeting on August ninth, so we're excited about that, they'll be at the airport, uh, for that meeting and then come into town to eat, or someone will come pick up food for them, I suggest that put a little loose tail, obviously. Um, meetings will have, library board will meet, uh, tomorrow. In the library, five fifteen. Um, and then we don't, I don't have anything on the books as far as any other meetings go. Tree Board will not meet this month, um, there being no action on their agenda and no necessity for them to meet. Uh, they'll, their next meeting will be in August on the twenty-first, so no meeting for them this month, which is not a big deal, they normally have one or two meetings a year that they don't need to meet, so.
Perfect. Alright. It is now seven oh six, I'm gonna open the, um, public hearing for reviewing LB eight forty Citizen Advisory Review, six month report, and this is what we're required to do every six months, so this is a standard item.
Yeah, we have the, uh, the public hearing as required by Nebraska State Stat Sheet, uh, in January and July. Um, the economic, or sorry, Citizen Advisory Review Board was able to meet, and I'll talk a little bit more on that in the standing committee reports, but this was part of their process. Uh, they approved this, uh, report, obviously you have to have a public hearing for that, they do not, which is strange to me, because everyone who recommends a loan, although they are a main advisory committee. Um, but we only have one outstanding loan and one outstanding grant, um, the loan is paying on time and the grant is continuing to be satisfied, so.
Any, uh, public wish to speak to this item? Again, this is the, uh, purpose of reviewing LB eight forty Citizen Advisory Review Committee's six month report, and we do have to open to, like, fifteen minutes.
Could be a long one, too.
Yeah.
I will note that.
Can you give your updates since it's the same committee during this?
Oh, absolutely, I think that would be.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, yeah.
So, the board is up with it. Okay, so the Citizen Advisory Ru- Review Board did meet, um, and as you will see on your agenda, they are recommending, uh, a loan, uh, for a hundred and twenty-five thousand to the CRA for the new subdivision project. Um, I will also note that, uh, Mr. Dever has been in contact with me a couple of times about, um, their, their meeting to do some work in their building to make it more, uh, feng shui. To flow better, um, e- efficient, I think is the actual word, um, and as well some bathroom work, so I think he'll be putting some numbers together and talking with his wife and the employees about maybe a possible another refinance for that. And we would be on board, because they paid on time and they've been very good, uh, so, a terrific use of the funds there. So, uh, yeah, no, and then Citizen Advisory Review Board, that was their two, two agenda items was, uh, the, the loan for the CRA and then approving the LB forty funds, so which both items moved unanimously, so. If you know of anyone else who would like to start a business or maybe need some equipment for their business, some other eligible use of the funds.
Did you let the, um, Vince Harbor know about what's available?
We did, we did, and maybe they will down the road, but they chose not to upfront, so.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of any new that might not know about it.
Yeah, Royce and I had a good conversation about it and, and, uh, I think as they move along, maybe they'll, they'll get to a point where they wanna do something with that, I think you talked about HVAC type stuff, the right, they continue to have some troubles with their HVAC, so. Which, I don't know if you looked at Friday and Saturday, it was gonna be a hundred and one and a hundred and five, so, for a hundred and four, I carried a hundred and five, so.
I don't know, anything over a hundred is just, no, no.
It's gonna work your HVAC system pretty hard, so.
Yeah, did you see the record in, um.
Death Valley?
California, it wasn't Death Valley, but, um, it's in California. They hit the whole time high of a hundred and twenty-four.
Cute.
I said, yeah.
No, that's concerned. Well, you probably can't.
I was a hundred and thirty, so.
No, thanks, that's so terrible.
I have got ten minutes.
Lisa. I understand here a while back there was an individual in town that wanted to be out at the airport, and he was gonna flip airplanes. I don't know how that came about, same ways talked to him.
I never heard of him.
I would love to have that conversation, we'd love to.
Well, send him down.
To lease some ground to him.
Yeah, I would go right under the, this type of.
New business, we would love.
He's just like flying like that.
Uh, that's, honestly, that's what, uh, that's what our previous FBO did, quite a bit of was flipping, flipping planes, did, did a lot of that, flipping planes up, this game businesses, going to hit planes and bringing them back, fixing them up and selling them. Better know what you're doing if you're flipping an airplane. Make some money on those planes.
We have to spend two or three million dollars. I know Ben, uh, Lee Nelson, so just talking, what?
I have trouble changing my windshield wipers every now and then. They wanna change them all the time.
Yeah, I feel so bad. So many of those. Is that Army Band, I mean, at seven p.m.?
Yes. They have forty, forty members.
And if, aren't they having like a guest, a local guest that's going to do?
The high school, they've got a competition, high schooler, or, or, what do you want?
I heard a French horn, I can't read that.
I'm gonna tell you, the weather temperature should be at seven, I think.
Well, that's. Surely that, that's part of their, whether, if it's too hot, they'll go into the, I'm still, like, here.
I think dark, too hot, but, but dark, like, on the other, and then the school reserve.
Uh, seeing that band shell, that time to its ruling means, uh, some, it's reminding you, showing you down there.
We should run over there, uh, seven p.m. on Thursday to see a lot of this.
She'll be here tomorrow.
Oh, she is gonna.
On Wednesday, because they play smaller fashion.
Yeah.
Plays in a wall that sounds like a square.
Yeah. Should, should I run over there and take the temperature?
Everybody's in the house now.
Yeah, we don't need to call any of those.
No, I think they'll be well, well-wear.
Yeah.
I'm talking to them, I'm talking to the people sitting there.
Yeah. Well, and, and their uniforms, aren't their uniforms like dress uniforms?
Yeah. They're, they're wool uniforms.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. Alright, last chance, we've got, uh, four more minutes, any questions concerning the public hearing of the LB eight forty Citizen Advisory Review Committee for the public? Thought of anything from sitting here? It's a pretty quick cut. Just a requirement we have to fulfill every, twice a year. Alright, last minute of the public hearing for the reviewing of the LB eight forty Citizen Advisory Review Committee's six month report. Alright, it is seven twenty-one, I'm closing the public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the LB eight forty Citizen Advisory Review Committee's six month report.
If I may, just a couple more communications that might touch on, um, we've got the Perkins County Fair coming up next week. Tried to shift our focus, especially with the fire coming in to the streets. Um, and then Assistant Steven in the cemetery, nasty little friend, the cactus is coming back. Uh, so, he'll be, he'll be needing some assistance, assistance with that, um. We, we didn't, we weren't able to dig up some thistle as well when we were out there, um, I think we got that under control, but, um, that nasty cactus, it's not back as bad as it was, but it is coming back, we seem like we've got sort of an isolated area. Jesse and I kinda went out there and did some markings for the baby land marker, the part of the stuff donated that will be up by the end of this week, um, that we're, we're working on fo- focusing on. Um, so hopefully we can hit that hard again. Other than that, I, I think the new section especially looks greener than I've seen it, um, thankful to Mother Nature there.
Yeah.
She gave us, she gave us what we needed out of the sky, hopefully that stick isn't turned off, hopefully we get some more of that.
Especially after, just again.
Yeah.
Any other communications?
No, thank you.
Alright, Andrea, any communications for us? Kimberly?
No.
Teri?
No.
Alright.
Cemetery Board met five fifteen today, just to have your meeting here, um, again, there's just for, uh, opportunity for me to give them an update on the, the marker going up, uh, for baby land, so, uh, which Jason Karmpatrick is, is working on diligently, so.
Thank you very much. Alright, we have, looks like the water report is what we have. Everyone get a chance to look at that? Acknowledge that we have reviewed the, the water report.
And you should have that enforcement also, that which, oh, the enforcement report? Oh.
No.
No, uh-uh. What did I do with this, I haven't done?
Hey, you have a warrant, you'll have to enforce it and report it the next meeting.
Sorry.
It's okay.
So, what happened to it? Something like this.
Uh-huh, it's alright.
I know, I'm doing my best, I'm swallowed.
The, the, yep, black hole. Any financials for us, Jesse?
They'll be at the next meeting, they're in the process.
Oh, that's, thank you, man. Okay, thank you very much. Any public comment today?
I do. As usual. Phil Cockles, Tim Grassland, at the last council meeting. Next day I went in and talked to Mr. Dunn. And I asked him why, of course he is, you know, I don't take fair like what's central. So I asked him, why do we have it? And he said, there's a statue state of Nebraska. I would like to see that. I'll pick it up tomorrow. Also, the weed control, as you know, it's a pet peeve of mine. There's weeds all over this town. Here again, I asked him, he said that's sheriff department job. So I talked to Mr. Brigham and he, no. So I'd like to have the contract from the sheriff's department to the city of Grant. I'd like to read that contract to see what it actually says. All I got.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, there not been any other, oh, sorry, I have one, oh, you have one, okay.
I do, I had an out of town, yes, well, they have a home here, but they are only here occasionally, that came in for fourth. And stopped me to say that they were absolutely in awe of the park. They said it looked amazing, um, for the Fourth of July, but then also on the fifth, the fact that all of the trash was picked up. You couldn't tell that there was several hundred people in the park the day before, so they were very impressed. And so I thought that should be carried over to our city employees.
Thank you.
As a thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a wonderful day.
It was really nice, it was nice that it was not a hundred degrees, so.
Yes, yes, thank you for pressing on, I appreciate that. All right, we did unfinished business, we'll move on to new business review and discussion of the city of Grant improvements for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and Edward.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I was, had opportunity to update some things in here, um, and will do again as we get June period of financials done. So we can get, uh, numbers narrow down here. Um, airport, our main project next year will be the Blue Hangar Rehab. Um, actually hoping to expend our, the remainder of our ARPA funds this year. I mean Jesse and Anita have been working diligently and putting stuff together so that we can submit for reimbursement on that. Um, they have a nice list that they gave us this time to follow as to what we can read, what they'll reimburse for, for ARPA funds there. Uh, American Rescue Plan Act funds that we would give them, uh, to specifically to the airport. Um, so that was, that was nice of them to do that, so. There were, Jesse and Anita are working on it.
Oh, they aren't denied.
Um, we talked about the ARPA funds for, um, and then I know it says Surer Main Project, um. Really it'll just be for the project itself, not just for the. Uh, for the new subdivision project. Uh, cemetery, touch point in the remaining brick columns, uh, spoke with Jason, he's, he's gonna give me a new number for that. He thinks it'll actually be less than that since he did the two big, we replaced the two big columns, um, last year, so. Uh, well, this year, in this fiscal year, so that's good news there. Um, infrastructure for the subdivision project, um, tried to figure as much as we can, cut into there with a little bit of wiggle room. Um, we don't, there may be additions or subtractions that we don't know about, so that gives us a little wiggle room, about fifty thousand dollars worth. Uh, economic development loans to the C R A, uh, that's in your packet later. Um, electric, uh, transformers, those are just normal replacements that we need to have on hand. Um, conversion of the Mercury bulb side streets, we still have a lot of Mercury bulb, uh, side street lamps that we're trying to convert to L E Ds slowly but surely, so. Um, I know, uh, Seth sends me emails almost every day, replace this one at this location, so. That's, that's an ongoing project there. Subdivision, new service, uh, that'll be for the new housing subdivision. Um, things we talked about last time in the general, um, the address signage on hold, uh, we will need a new office computer. Um, replacement of council chairs on hold at this time, uh, and then loans for the C R A in one twenty-five. Um, and the reason we're not asking for the full amount, not only do we not need it, but we may need it in the future for other projects. So we felt it prudent to leave as much wiggle room there as we could, so. I did reach out to the library and asked for any updates on the cap, their capital improvements, and they will be discussing that at their meeting tomorrow. So hopefully I'll have some actual numbers and things to put into that bullet point. Um, lottery, that's just placeholder there to let you know that we don't have any Keno funds coming in, but we've still got about seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars to expend. Um, we'll have administration fees that'll have to come out of there, but, uh, we got about seventeen thousand dollars to expend. Uh, so if someone, community member knows of a project, I think the museums use the fund, senior centers use some funds. Jesse's got the complete list, she's provided it to you guys a couple of times, but, but, uh, we've got those funds for community, community improvement projects, so. Um, park and rec, uh, this is kind of an update here, remove and replace the wood planks with aluminum planks on the benches. We had started this project a couple of years ago and just been slowly working at it. Um, the Nebraska Community Foundation in conjunction with the Perkins County Community Foundation, uh, has a group of, the youth group, um, and they received uh, seventy-five thousand specifically, seventy-five hundred specifically for this project. So I've ordered the remainder of the planks, and they also received an additional seventy-five hundred, and that will also go to park improvements. So painting, whatever, they're, they're coming, they're supposed to be coming up with a list to expend that seventy-five hundred dollars.
So it was a matching grant.
Yep.
Oh, nice.
So that's great news, and it gets the kids involved, which is super, super exciting. Michelle Roth's obviously heading that up, so she's, she's brilliant. Um, bench show bench renovations, that would be painting, uh, the columns, you know, the red and the blue where the benches actually sit. Um, which might also come out of the seventy-five hundred, um, don't know yet.
Michelle was planning to try to start spring again, she said.
Yep. Um, basketball court, tennis court resurfacing fence, most of that will be fence, uh, for next year.
Till twenty twenty-five.
Yep. And then ball field and park ren, park restroom renovations, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of ten thousand, we're gonna have to do some concrete work around the park bathrooms. There's a significant crack and heave in, in front of the women's restroom door, painting, ceiling. Um, thankfully we just had the roof done, thank, well, not thankful to hell, but hail, did help that process. Um, and then as well as the restrooms at the ball fields themselves, um, I believe, I think you guys came up with the best foot forward on that rather than spending a hundred and twenty-five or two hundred and fifty thousand on new restrooms, we, we, uh, give those a nice facelift, uh, as well as some porta jocks for the, for the year, so. Um, still no input back on the ball field area purchase, I'll reach back out to county attorney to get on top of that. Um, splash pad, there you go. It's, it's a, it's the dream on there, so, um. Curtis, I believe, is putting in a splash pad, um, I talked to their city administrator, and they're gonna be somewhere in that four to six hundred thousand dollar range. It's a recirculating system, which is what I would advise we do if we do some of this pumping water and drain, um, so.
And we cannot hook it up to the pool because of.
Cannot run off the same system, it has to have its own system, so. Um, and that's, that, they have quite a few amenities, so that, the reason it's four, four to six for them is you can bring that number down, obviously you shoot for the fences and then bring it in to play where you want it to be. It's like we did with the pool, you shop with the fence and then there are amenities there. So the fewer amenities you have, the less it's gonna cost, the smaller the pumping need, et cetera, so on, so for the less chemicals you'll need to run it every year, so, yeah. It's on there.
Thank you.
Uh, Surer Main extension for the new subdivision, again, I talked about that and ARPA funds. Surer Main cambering, clicking, that's our, one of the funds, there's seventeen thousand, and then a third of the new pickup. Um, street, grass, crack ceiling asphalt patching, uh, intersection improvement, which is next on the list. Doesn't have to be the project we receive, it's just the next one on our one and six list. Um, we, we can obviously, when we did that point in January, make a different project. Curb, curb and gutter improvements, uh, sidewalk improvements, storm drain cleaning and cambering, and then a third pickup, waste, new dumpsters there. Um, that's, we need to do that every year. Uh, and then water, just on your radar there. Again, we continue to operate efficiently, all wells are running, we have one that's losing some efficiency, um, so we need to think about a new well site, uh, for that. Uh, meter, meter pitch for the new subdivision, and a third new pickups there. Any questions?
Is my thorough list, any, maybe other additional items that we need to have in the best of these?
For sidewalk improvements, is that a designated area?
Uh, our re conjunction was planned, the T C engineering comes up with, um, we're not, he's not quite there yet. He's still, he sent the original, or the, uh, first draft, and I sent some revisions to it. So hopefully we'll have something there, I, I talked about the community survey upon that, so when we're ready, I have the map to show people what it would look like. Send out a community survey to keep that on that, so. It'll be, it'll be a continuing, every year we do a little bit, every year we do a little bit, every year we do.
That's a good idea. Did we once have talked about street lights that would match the pools downtown, up corners to light, to continue, like the corner ones and.
Yeah, we have those pools, we have, we have extra pools on hand, so that's why, that's why you see.
We do, how many more do we have left?
Uh, we have four more on hand, and we'll keep one of those in case of an accident.
Do you have a corner to identify this one?
We'll just work our way down. We'll go across from the bend domain and over the third street and across.
Why didn't we just do them when we were doing it?
Well, I didn't know that we were gonna, they had reduced the number of holes from the original plan, so when we had, when we had ordered those, that was not in the original. It would have exceeded the fifteen percent increase on the contract.
So we can't even increase the contract?
No, no.
All right. Review the discussion on the city of Grant employee compensation for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and this will be on the agenda, I, I can.
Um, I'm hoping to have the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance at the next meeting, if possible, and ask some guidance here, you know, as far as what you guys are thinking. Uh, so that I can start the preparation of that, and, and we can start the three readings, so yes, it'll still be on the agenda. We can go one more meeting, and then we have to have the first read in August, the first meeting in August. Uh, we can have, we can have this as a discussion, so if one more reading, the second meeting in July, then the ordinance has to start August fifteenth.
Okay. Um, I, I do wanna note, um, thanks to time clocks, we do know that Edward puts fifty-four plus hours, fifty-two plus hours on a regular basis. So if that, if that matters.
Edward's like.
He is overtime at least, you do not.
Yeah, Edward does not get overtime, so, um, that is why I'm breaking that up.
I'm okay with that.
I did not do the math, would it be possible for us, um, the calculations for the comparable community average adjustment to know what that percent is? So we're just coming up to the average based on the communities that we have compared.
Per position, yeah.
I think so, yeah. And then, I can't remember what we had shared, is our thoughts on COLA, what is that?
COLA was two point eight at the last, and I, I figured three. I can definitely prepare that for you, no problem.
Thank you.
I do not know where COLA is gonna lie, a couple of weeks, but it's what it was in the last.
If it turned you either direction?
The last release, it's trending downward slightly, um, I think it went down point four from the two point eight, from the five before that was three point two, I believe, down to two point eight.
And then the other thing I was noticing is the public works foreman and the public works assistant, one have a considerable gap now. I was assuming we did that because of responsibilities of the roles, but when we do the adjustment for the comparable average, we're closing that gap a little bit?
So that was, that's why you see kind of a, one below it says all the department head. I would be changing that title to all the department head, and therefore splitting departments, departments between the two, three and two, that's why there's still a little bit of a gap. And as have an additional department, the department has responsibility, so that's why you see that.
That makes sense, so the description of the position is where we're going, it's not where we're.
So currently is the public works foreman, and then the one below it is what I'm suggesting.
Correct.
That is clear as far as.
Yeah, well, that, that makes sense. Right, so sort of, you're increasing the responsibilities of the second person.
Yes, increasing the responsibilities of one individual having all of those departments.
And the waste department is still.
Yes, the waste department will still be underneath the foreman as well, so that's why there's still a little bit, yeah.
With that change, do we have to take a look at the job description in our.
I've already began some of that, some of that wording and, and work, and we'll have the words comments soon as possible, so shaking your view, but yeah. Edward, who requires some changes to our personal manual and, um, our job descriptions as well. Um, again, I, I think this is probably the best way to split the departments and responsibility up between the two. Um, it is a lot, there's a lot of departments for one individual to manage as well as two employees, um, so. It, it's worth looking at anyways, and I think it, I think it will be beneficial, uh, in the end, as far as holding people accountable, especially.
And then since I guess you're looking at job descriptions, I was asked by the COA staff about holiday pay for Fourth of July. This is majority of them working, I know that they're not permanent employees of the city, but everybody else who is employed by the city is off that day. So I can, I just think that should be considered or thought through.
Yeah.
It is not required, never has been. I would give, to you guys, I guess if you wanted to give them a.
I don't think they all have to work, so I guess the question was kind of like, what's the incentive to make yourself available to work on that day? And it's especially insane.
Right, cause it's free swimming, and so you're probably at the max all day, you know.
Because of the cooler temperatures, we apparently have over a hundred.
Yeah, no, this year I thought it was.
This year, but if it's hot, then, then yeah, we may. We get two hundred last year, we get two hundred last year, I'm sure, yeah.
I think it would be good to give like up to a dollar an hour or.
It's not bad, I mean, I don't know if Brittany had any issues staffing for the holiday or not, but.
No, this week was crazy.
Yeah, would you wanna reach out to her about that, cause I, I mean, really that should come from her.
So really that would be Memorial Day.
Right.
Of course, the job would be drawing two movies, that would be holidays that would fall in that's open.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Unless, are they gonna extend this one period this year till after Labor Day?
We will go to Labor Day.
To Labor Day.
It will be open on Labor Day, but we're not.
No, we will, we will go to August thirty-first. August thirty.
So two options?
Yeah, so two all of them, so yeah, I think that's a valid point. And, um.
So differential pay?
Right, for holidays.
Good.
And then I guess I, I have to agree with Kimberly, cause like, when I was looking at this, you know, when you go across, like, pay increase on one of them should be like eighty-nine cents at three percent. And then I guess I, I have to agree with Kimberly, because like, when I was looking at this, you know, when you go across, like, pay increase on one of them should be like eighty-nine cents at three percent. But it's almost raising them four dollars, so we can guys see where the cost.
The breakdown.
That could, you know, the community, that is three dollars and then plus the COLA is what, yeah, rather than just the increase of what your recommendation for wages are.
Absolutely, it's easy, yeah.
I don't think I have any other questions.
And I do appreciate that you included the total benefits that we, that we offer. So we can see the, the big picture of what a person is actually getting, yep. So that includes.
Yeah, the SIO is something that will be incorporated from here now, and Kim, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Of your brainchild, so.
You did the work, it's kinda like it's happened.
I think that's very beneficial going forward.
Yeah, for sure.
Rather than the fourteen sheets I gave you before, flipping back and forth.
Right, flipping them back and forth, that's all, the big picture is all, all on here.
Again, we have a, one more meeting, so I, I could probably prove with those questions and changes that, uh, we, we carry this to the next meeting. Um, obviously, it's just discussions, you don't need to table it, uh, but, uh, we'll have one more time for discussion at the next meeting and then from there we'll have to set some guidelines to prepare the ordinance.
Okay. And, and you also indicated to the library president that we, and director that we need information.
I did, I did, so, and I, they had their budget meeting on June twentieth, I believe, and I was unable to attend that. So they have also indicated that they will present their budget at the next meeting, so.
All right, good discussion. Action and discussion on resolution twenty-four oh seven oh one, authorization of the mayor of the city council and the city grant for the county of Nebraska to approve the promissory note for the community redevelopment authority from economic development fund for the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Again, I, I did present this to Tom and those econo, citizens advisory review board, second I've ever done that. I wanted to say economic development, but that's not it. Citizens Advisory Review Board, um, all were in agreement and, and thought this was a good plan and supported the new housing initiative, uh, for, for grants, so I, I think it's, with their recommendation, Tom had no changes. Yeah, any, any questions? Good answer, honestly, tried to.
Payment act you had set out a couple of years because we were hoping that we would start to get more of that funding in to proceed and stuff, so that they have time to start to get more equipment.
So that was my question, when I sat, oversaw, I guess, the CRA, there was not a whole lot going on, um, so I really didn't have to think about like, how does the CRA repay a loan? Um, but that was the first question that came to mind, like, if we loan this out, have we calculated the two TIF initiatives that we have? Would they have that income in a worst-case scenario, or is this really being optimistic, like, how does that work?
There's a, there's a little bit of both, it's, it's both optimistic and as well as, as counting on TIF. The other portion of how they're going to repay their loans will be lot sales. So as they sell lots and lots are developed, they not only get to sell the lot, proceed, but they'll also beat the TIF off of that, as well as all the one, the, the TIF off of the Bishop property as well, so. And Mr. Bacon is, is working on that now, but he, he, he was actually assuming a more aggressive, uh, sorry, Mike Bacon is the CRA attorney. Um, he's assuming a more aggressive. He, he thinks we can sell all these in ten years and actually repay all of our loans in ten years.
Oh wow.
So.
And that's just from his experience with other cities?
That's his, yeah, that's from his experience with working with TIF and what he thinks some of the larger lots might sell for and be appraised at on the Bishop property as well as ours. Um, he's also very good friends with the cert, with the Mezner Development and, uh, and he, he already wrote about this through Cliff and his wife, so.
Oh, okay. So is there discussion about what those lots are going?
That will be the CRA's next meeting, they have a bill, bill to pay, so we'll, I'll be putting out a, a request on that. Uh, we, we talked about what Paxton did, Paxton did one around a dollar ninety-six a square foot. So if you figure that into one of the lots, it's somewhere between that fifteen to eighteen thousand dollar range per lot on the single-family, single-family homes. Uh, Mr. Bacon is working on the, the duplex lots, the bigger, the bigger lots for us, as we, that's not our forte, that's not our, what we normally deal in, so.
So if for any reason economy takes a nosedive and nobody wants to buy lots, what happens if the CRA, because right now today, and I admittedly have not looked at their cash flow, but if we recalled this loan, they would not be able to pay it, so I guess what happens? Is anybody else wondering, was, that was my first question?
Yeah, you're, you're taking that risk.
Okay.
That's where the optimism comes in.
Sure, yeah, no, good, good.
And there, yeah, I mean, there, it is, it is optimism, but there's also some, some metrics involved here that, you know, I think we can sell at least one lot. And, and also, we're, we're gonna pledge the World War Force Housing Fund, now branded as if we get awarded it, but we would have.
It would be pretty successful.
We, we, we would, we would have those funds coming in as well, which would guarantee a home being.
And this is essential for them to move forward with really the air bottles of being able to sell less, right?
But the infrastructure.
We've kind of come this far at this point.
They're looking at on them and for them.
Yeah.
And how many lots, remind me, how many lots are gonna be to sell out there?
Bishop and?
No, I just wanna know the ones that the CRA will, actually receive income money for, for the sale of the lot, nothing to do with Bishop.
Fourteen in the first phase. And then we'll have seven additional in the second phase.
So when the second phase, when do you plan, when do they plan on the, sell the second phase?
Eight. Second phase will only happen after seventy-five percent capacity in the first phase.
Then you'll have to put more structure in the whole project.
Okay, so you said, give me the average again, you said it's fourteen thousand, seventeen thousand a lot?
Seventeen, between fifteen and nineteen. Uh, don't hold up the.
So the max revenue they're gonna bring in is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand on those fourteen lots?
On, on.
That's seventeen thousand at the high.
On seven lots. I don't have the, uh, the estimates for the multi-family lots and or the, the.
Okay, so, okay, let's go back, how many, there'll only be seven lots for sale or fourteen?
There'll be fourteen for sale.
Okay.
Seven will be single-family homes. There's one larger lot next to Carl Lakes that could be the multi-family lot.
Are you gonna charge more than the?
Yes, we are. And then there's three larger lots that are also multi-family lots.
But, okay, still, if you, the, the four multi-family, or the three multi-family.
Plus fifteen years of TIF, around three to four thousand dollars.
I was a figure in TIF, do they have a set timeline that they have to have that house built? And again, is there stipulations that the real house has to be built by a certain?
They'll have covenants and as well as.
But what is the covenants, have they decided that yet?
Their, sorry, not set the covenant, uh, twenty-four months probably based on the timeframe of the loans.
Yeah, because that makes the difference as to how fast they pay back and whether TIF is there.
Which is why we set the loan repayment for two years. To coincide with when we would receive TIF. When the CRA would receive TIF.
So to answer your question, Kimberly, I think it's gonna be a pretty tight stretch for them to say that, that's all I have, that's just, just by the very brief.
Like math, yeah.
Very brief, um, I mean, it might be tight for them. Especially upon covenants, and especially with interest rates right now, I don't see them lining out the door, to be honest with you. Maybe the lots, but not the building, just because of how high interest rates are, that's my only quick.
Any questions? Yeah, we, we know.
But that's a long time period to maintain.
We, we, we gotta, we gotta risk, we gotta risk it to get the biscuit here, and we're, we're sticking, CRA is sticking their neck out there. Uh, they're, they're also, they're the ones really responsible for figuring out how to repay this. Based on Mr. Bacon's recommendation and, and, uh, we've got related, I think it's doable, but it is time, I don't disagree with you, Andrew, I think it is time.
Well, I mean, if they.
We're hoping for a better whole market, you know, I mean, I think things have started to turn around a little bit. We've seen some of the properties in town actually starting to finally sell, so.
Smaller loans.
Smaller loans, obviously, yes.
The higher ones are not living as fast. Um, but then that means they just have to sell two lots per year in between, which is about double.
Yes, that's what we've come up with.
But then they'll stop upon, on top of that, so. I mean, what does that look like if they default? It's a regional authority under us, I mean, obviously, a default is a default, but it feels a little bit less like a loan and more of like. Potentially, right, I mean, I don't, I don't.
Well, that's how economic development is, I mean, it is worded alone, but they help the cards and grant or, uh, or give, or an extension.
But I definitely wanna see it paid back, so I don't look at it as a grant or a gift, I look at it as a loan to be paid back, right, but you're right, at the same time, it could.
Yes, yeah. No. It's an extension. Which is why we're diligent with the two-year timeframe and trying to figure out, okay, if we sold two lots, how long would it take for those two lots to get together? How quickly could we get TIF on those, as well as trying to just estimate how many lots might sell on Bishop property? And we're receiving TIF funds from there, from those as well, so those are gonna be a higher price.
Taxes for those residents there living there. And then overall, our tax base, then, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, it's been studies in Nebraska shows all the way through our town is how.
I'm not against it, I just don't want to set it up for failure, raise my own way, because I'm, yeah, set it up to have that part.
We want it to be successful, so that we can do replicated.
And, and they were very appreciative, they have been very appreciative, I mean, I know that, that, uh, when we, when we met, you know, in the past, you know, with the ARCA funds and everything else, um, this, this can't happen without that, we, we would be a stalemate. Um, just the, the donation of the ARCA funds for this project are huge. I mean, that two hundred thousand dollars is gonna go a long way, I mean, that keeps us under that million-dollar total project.
Yeah.
Which is kind of where we wanted to be, so.
But it's good to look at all the angles as we're moving into this, so. Much needed discussion.
And there's really not much else we can do to help them be successful if this is the known dollar amount, except for adjustment of the payback timeframe.
Right, right, we can always extend the first payment.
Would we extend the first payment? But is that something that we could potentially revisit based on economic developments between now and then?
Absolutely. If we got to twelve months or eighteen months and we haven't done nittily slot, then I can guarantee the CRA is gonna be coming back here and saying, hey, uh, can you give us twenty-four more months?
Okay. It's, I mean, if you look at it from past economic development loans and stuff, we have gone back to the table and renegotiated and things like that. It's, that's the advantage of it, being with you guys, that you do have that to kind of help, help the project along.
Yeah. I mean, I definitely wanna see this continue to move forward, I just, that, those were the first questions that kind of came to my mind as well, just not understanding the funding resources. So I appreciate the information, for sure.
And we definitely want them to be successful, so we wanna set, have a good foundation, a good start for them, yeah.
Yeah.
I will make the motion to approve from motion twenty-four oh seven oh one, authorizing the mayor to sign. And Jesse, and the?
I think this, that's just a resolution, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'll just be the normal motion to resolution.
Okay, okay. Let's just break that last part.
Well, just, just because it's exhibit A within the resolution.
Oh, oh, I guess we have the law enforcement agreement in here, so you could authorize us to sign the.
Yeah.
Within C, or do we wait till?
There are one for each of those, there are two different momentary ones.
Okay.
So authorizing the mayor and Jesse to sign the exhibit?
Yes.
Kimberly, move, Terry, second to accept resolution twenty-four oh seven oh one, authorizing mayor and Jesse to sign the exhibit, any more discussion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion, Terry. All right, resolution twenty-four oh seven oh two, a resolution of the mayor and the city council to approve the promissory note for the grant community redevelopment authority from the General Fund for the principal sum amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Don't be frightened of dispersing the money.
I, I'll just put it through the bills and claims is what my thought is, um, when they're, when they're ready for the funds.
So we actually.
We wanted to make sure that like the funding was available, you know, to make a plan for the bond and stuff like that.
So we'll actually have to reapprove it through bills and claims?
I think that's how we did it the last time, at least.
Okay.
And this more likely will fall, we've given them the construction company December one, uh, completion timeframe. Now, they have the same option, they could ask for an extension if they think it's done by them, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that they do. Um, but most of this will have, have probably happened within the next fiscal year.
It's, I assume that they could be trying to purchase supplies and stuff, and this might be the startup funds that they're gonna use.
Sometimes those companies like to get the supplies and store them on site, in which case we would, we have a reason for that.
Well, it's set to action on resolution number twenty-four dash oh seven dash zero two, a resolution of the mayor and city to approve a promissory note for the grant community redevelopment authority, um, for the general grant of five for the principal sum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I'll authorize the mayor and Jesse to sign.
Second.
Terry, move, Andrea, second to approve resolution twenty-four oh seven oh two, promissory note to approve the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Authorizing the mayor and Jesse to sign, even though this is. Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
All right, action and discussion on resolution from four oh seven oh three, a resolution of the mayor and the city, um, the city council. Well, there's a designation of the ARCA fund, so this is, um, basically formally approved for the pleasure.
Yeah, so Tom, they, they, uh, we've done it in minutes, we've done it in a, in a motion before, this is actually a resolution that we made, so we need to submit and acquire the paperwork to FEMA for these funds, that shows it was actually approved in resolution four. And again, the guidelines for these were designated by December of twenty twenty-four and extended by December of twenty twenty-six, over which I can, well, obviously, if you want that, then construction and construction will need the other one, long before twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. And this will illustrate, because our reporting didn't resolve April, so this will at least illustrate that we'll have to somehow be looking at it, so we can try and.
I'm going to take some resolution twenty-four oh seven oh three, designation of the ARCA fund.
I think it takes up resolution twenty-four oh seven oh three, designation of the, our, the, second. And remove, Terry, second to approve resolution twenty-four oh seven oh three, the designation of the ARPA fund, any more discussion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Frank, quickly, don't put in the resolution itself, it does explain, I know that, agenda item, this is the designation of the funds, but in the resolution itself, it does explain where the funds are going to be, that's such a mission, actually.
Yep. Yeah, great, did everyone have a chance to look at building plans?
Yes.
Remove, takes up building plans to the amount of seventy-six thousand, six seventy-four oh eight.
And remove, Terry, second to accept building plans in the amount of seventy-six thousand, six seventy-four dollars, eight cents, any discussion?
Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie? We are adjourned at eight oh four. Go to one, if the session.
I want.